My name's Chris Inda. I am a candidate for Wisconsin Rapids School Board. And I'm a proud Wisconsin Rapids School parent who's been supporting our community since calling it home in 2011. I'm a U.S. Army veteran. I've earned my associate's degree from Mid State Technical College. And then as a local real estate agent, I work within the community and speak with many of our parents on a daily basis.
Hi. I'd like to begin by thanking the Wisconsin Rapids Community Media for giving me the opportunity to participate in this candidate forum. My name is John Krings. I'm running for position of school board member with the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. I'm a lifelong resident of central Wisconsin and a graduate of John Edwards High School in Port Edwards. I also attended Mid State Technical College. My wife Julie and I live in Grand Rapids. Our three children are graduates of Lincoln High School, and I'm employed by Indy Paper and Bearden. I have served on the Board of Education for almost 16 years, and I currently serve as Board President. I'm also a member of the Grand Rapids Lions Club and a past president of United Steelworkers Local Union 187.
Well, thank you for having me on here today, Joe. I'm Mike Geary. I'm a longtime resident here in Wisconsin Rapids. Having lived here since 1973, I'm a father, grandfather, and a great-grandfather. I worked in the Port Edwards and Acusa Mills 43 years, having became a senior dream on heavy equipment repair mechanic through a state indentured four-year program. So, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Stevins-Since, and I'm running to be a member of the Wisconsin Rapids Public School Board. Thanks to Joe and to the Wisconsin Rapids Community Media for giving us this opportunity to once again share a little bit about ourselves with you, the voter. I'd like to start out by sharing my background and experience with Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. And I think most important is the fact that I'm a mom of three kids who went through the Wisconsin Rapids Public School system. They went from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade and graduated from Lincoln High School. Their experience there was very positive. They had excellent teachers, excellent coaches and advisors, excellent courses and an excellent curriculum which prepared them for their future that they are pursuing now as young adults. My husband was also a teacher at Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools, 6th grade, and over at Ram's, a math teacher, for 20 years. And I worked for the district for 35 years. I began as a social studies teacher at Lincoln High School for 13 years, teaching history and political science and law. I was the director of curriculum and instruction for 14 years, actually the assistant director for seven, and then the director for eight years. And then I was also the principal at East Junior High for seven years. I feel very strongly about the district, and all it has to offer are students. I spent 35 years working in the district and retired in 2020. My education includes a Bachelor of Science in secondary education, social studies, and history. I have a law degree. And I also just finished my PhD in educational leadership and policy analysis, all from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Why am I running for school board? I'm running because I have a strong and passionate belief in public education. Public education provides our children the opportunity to pursue higher academics. It provides them employability skills, and it provides them the opportunity to be good citizens of our communities, our state, and our world. I'm also running because I believe deeply in the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools' mission statement of providing the best education possible for every student. It would be an honor to serve you, the taxpayer, on the Wisconsin Rapids Public School Board.
I feel that a major challenge currently facing our district is the uncertain funding provided by the state. It's extremely difficult to plan a budget when you're unsure of what your funding levels will be. We also live in a community that has recently undergone the shutdown of a major employer, causing more uncertainty and poverty than we were accustomed to. We have also come out of almost two years of dealing with a worldwide pandemic. I feel that the board has done a good job of operating under these difficult circumstances, but there's always more work to do.
Our academic achievements are our major challenge. Suffering a 10-year decline in many areas, especially in reading and mathematics, is a fact that the majority of students in grades 3 through 8 are not performing at grade level. We need everyone on board to reverse this failing trend in our schools. Unfortunately, there are some in our district that don't believe the DPI's reports in these failings. I propose we look at our curriculum regarding these subjects and look into more class time in these areas. These are core areas of education, and we need to set long-term goals, checking progress on an annual basis to be certain the choices we have are having positive impact.
We need to provide the best education possible for every student, and that includes providing and meeting the needs of the student who wants to pursue higher education, who is interested in pursuing academia. We need to meet the needs of the student who is interested in pursuing a technological education, whether that's working on computers, or becoming a welder, or becoming a chef. We need to support students who have learning issues and making sure they're able to be successful too. We need to provide co-curriculars for students. We need to provide opportunities in the arts and athletics. We need to be sure students are fed, and we need to be sure that if they have issues that are emotional or issues with mental health, that we're providing them the services that we need. Our environments need to be safe and secure, and our facilities need to do the best to maximize learning for our students. That's a pretty big ask. On the other side of that, though, we recognize that we have limited budgets. We need to balance providing the best education possible with limited budgets. The state has imposed several regulations on school districts, such as revenue caps and per pupil spending, that make it sometimes difficult to meet all those needs. In addition, our community, with mill closures and higher costs, are meeting budgetary challenges themselves, and the school has to address those challenges as well. So as school board members, when we look at our greatest issue, it's being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and then balancing that with making sure all of our children's needs are met. So if that's the biggest issue, what are the solutions? And I think the biggest solution is leadership, leadership, leadership. We need to have strong leaders who are committed to our community, who understand budgeting, who understand how school budgets and school law works. We need to have good leaders who understand how to hire the best and the brightest teachers. And we need to have good leaders who understand the community itself so they can look for ways to share services and provide what our kids need.
Yeah, so I do want to look further into why our test scores have been declining. So certainly, the pandemic has exacerbated any education issues, you know, the learning in the classroom or via virtual. These issues have been happening since prior to the pandemic as well. We've noticed a trend of declining forward test scores since prior to the pandemic. Currently, our school district has about 70% of our student population not reading at a proficient level, according to the forward exam. And, you know, so my top priority will be improving that academic outcome for our students. I want to put the focus back on the traditional education, basic curriculum, and create a place for, you know, for the students to be able to learn properly, but also a safe place and a fun place for them. So I do know the school district has implemented some social and emotional learning competencies, behavior interventions, along with a district-wide data tracking system. They've provided professional development support for staff involved in any issues, along with engaging or furthering the engagement with some of our local services, such as Wood County Health and Human Services. With that being said, there's certainly room to expand upon that, add, you know, some more support, and make sure our students have the proper channels they need to go to to get the mental health needs. So I'm certainly not a mental health expert. You know, those are the type of people we need to certainly rely on and engage. However, incorporating, you know, values-based principles does hold promise in education and mental health capacity. Finding similar values that we can all agree upon while celebrating our differences and our diversities. So, you know, I think we need to have a strong value standpoint, as well as continue to strengthen those mental health resources that we're using.
We currently have multiple mental health screeners in use throughout our district, as well as partnerships with local mental health providers. We also do surveys of students to assess risky behaviors. Our staff are focused on the mental health of our students. We also attempt to work with parents to address students' needs. I feel that these are all good approaches, and we continue to look for ways to help students and staff that may be in need.
This is another serious issue that demands everyone's attention on board here. Wisconsin Rapids School District currently has seven school psychologists and four social workers to help in this area. It's imperative that they're making sure that we utilize their abilities to the fullest. We need to seriously look for long-term solutions, and one possible solution would be to look at other school districts that are successfully dealing with this, and see if there's effective answers that we can amass and apply here. We need to consistently review and update our policies and implement new policies required to address these issues. Much of this comes back to failing in the classroom. If a child is struggling to do the basics in the classroom, this leads to acting out, having meltdowns, and if they're unable to get the children at the learning level they need to be, this is just going to lead to more mental anguish. We have ESER funds that are available at this point. I believe there's still over $3 million that are available. We should certainly look into utilizing some of that ESER funds to help support and make some effort in these areas.
The District of Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools is doing a great deal to address student mental health needs. First, we have a highly educated staff of counselors, psychologists, and social workers who work every day to help students who have mental health needs. Second, we educate staff on issues related to mental health, whether it might be AODA issues, trauma issues. And by educating the staff, we help them to understand what students are going through so they can better provide learning experiences for those students, as well as make referrals to our pupil services staff when students need it. Another thing we use are screeners that help identify students who have mental health issues. And by using those screeners, red flags are raised, and counselors, pupil services staff, like psychologists and social workers, can respond to those students' needs more quickly and make sure students aren't doing anything which could cause harm to themselves or others. And finally, using COVID funding, the district has very, I think, progressively hired student engagement facilitators. There are student engagement facilitators at every building, and those are staff members that are highly trained and work with classroom teachers to help classroom teachers address students who have behavior issues that might be a result of mental health issues. And they work closely with classroom teachers to support them and to make sure behaviors are the best they can be so that good learning occurs in our classrooms. And finally, it's very important that issues of mental health are addressed in the curriculum for students. Students need to learn and understand issues of mental health so they can help to grow as strong individuals and grow into strong adults, and they can help recognize if they have issues they need help with and where they can go for that help, as well as if their friends have issues. How can we improve the mental health we have in the district or the mental health services that we provide in the district? I think one thing we can do is always be hiring the best and the brightest when it comes to our counselors, our social workers, and our psychologists. We can always hire more, but that's costly. So there are ways we need to address that, whether it's grant dollars, whether it's sharing services with other mental health agencies in the community so we're not duplicating services. For example, working closely with organizations like the Boys and Girls Club, local counseling agencies, Wood County Health and Human Services. And I think always, always continuing staff and student education, that is critical, and keeping up to date on issues so that staff and students understand what's out there, what they need, and how they can receive help.
I feel the key to deal with the vaping issue is education. We still don't know the long-term effects of vaping. Our staff deal with vaping within the schools as they find it, but education is the key to hopefully keep kids from starting to vape in the first place.
As far as vaping goes, I would reach out to our local merchants and legislators and enlist their assistance, ensuring that children or folks, kids under 18, shouldn't have access to these materials. We need to review and update policies that are concerning this, and one possible course of action would be that we set new policy that all schools will follow. We need to show a good, solid stand by all the principals, schools, and teachers against vaping.
Vaping has become a growing problem in recent years in the district. We need to educate staff, students, and parents about the prevalence of vaping and about the dangers related to it. They need to understand the dangers so they can better make decisions for themselves and their children. We also need to ensure that the information is included in the curriculum. Students need to understand about vaping and how it's harming them, how it's costly to their health, as well as to their finances. So by including this information in the curriculum and providing appropriate materials so staff can teach this effectively, will help eliminate the vaping problem. We also need clear and understandable school rules about vaping. Vaping isn't acceptable in the schools or on school property. So those rules need to be communicated and be clear to staff, to students, and to parents. Staff need to understand so they can teach kids about it. Parents need to understand so they can teach their kids about it. And kids need to understand so they know if they choose to vape what's going to happen. And the consequences for vaping need to be clearly laid out as well, and they need to be consistently enforced. And finally, we need board policies to support these school rules. And currently, there is a board policy. It used to be just about smoking and tobacco products, but the district has added the issue of vaping into the policy. It is current, but we need to make sure to keep that policy current as changes occur and as new things happen.
So I think this is similar to, and I can remember when I was in grade school, that is, the DARE program, and all the, you know, resources that went into promoting that program and how effective it was. I think that's a very similar standpoint here, is creating, you know, enough resources and enough opportunity and education out there for all the students to have available. So creating more education around what the effects of vaping, you know, can be, understanding each child and what works for them. And what I mean by that is, you know, different types of approaches to trigger, you know, understanding of what vaping can do. So whether it be, you know, different types of reasoning approaches, the scared-straight method, you know, ways to make it worth their while, such as maybe an incentive type of program. You know, these are just different types of ideas, but using the thought process and having different options and strategies available. There are countless programs and nonprofits out there that specialize in, you know, education, funding, teaching for, you know, not only vaping, but other, you know, school issues as well. But tapping into those resources, having additional assemblies at school, bringing those, you know, partners in, you know, maybe some coursework activities, some parent-community programs. I think there's a lot of opportunity, you know, in all those avenues to grow the awareness and bring that to our classroom.
We need to address the learning gap that occurred from COVID on two levels. First, we need to look at individual students and how they've been affected by COVID. And then we need to look at the curriculum in general and how it's been affected by COVID. So let's start with the individual students. The first thing we need to do is we need to use test data, screener data, and teacher input to identify kids who are struggling because of COVID and that learning gap. Who are those kids? And where is the areas that they're showing deficiencies? And then we need to wrap services around those kids so we can take them from where they are back to meeting grade-level standards. The district has several reading specialists, I think about 20 reading specialists who have masters in the teaching of reading. We have several math specialists as well. Those staff need to be matched with the students that are struggling from that learning gap. And those staff are highly trained in teaching that content. They're also highly trained in using interventions to help kids get up to grade level. So that definitely needs to occur. And then finally, we need to track the progress of those students to make sure they're getting back to grade level, to make sure they're getting back to where they need to be because of that learning gap. And we need to be, as we're tracking that progress, working with parents so they understand as well what's happening as we're moving those kids back to grade level. So that's what I would suggest for the individual student. As far as the general curriculum, I think, again, we need to go back to our assessment data, both state assessments and local assessments that are used, and look at where there are some general trends that our kids are falling down. So for example, if you're looking at mathematics, are they falling down in the area of measurement? Are they falling down in the area of problem solving? And then we need to look very closely at our curriculum and make sure that we filled in those gaps. We need to look very closely at our materials and make sure our materials are supporting those gaps. And we also need to be a little bit flexible in our teaching. So for example, if a child was a third grader during COVID and missed, or our third-grade students missed that learning about that particular content, we need to make sure it's re-taught in fourth grade, although the fourth-grade teacher might not normally cover that content because of COVID they need to. So there has to be teacher collaboration and flexibility in that teaching to make sure we haven't missed any really critical content. And the last thing I want to share with you on this topic is some good news. After COVID, when you look at our district's test scores in 2021, there definitely was a decline. The test scores weren't as strong. But when you look at 2122, the test scores went up in every area. So we are coming out of that COVID slump. That's the good news. We still have a long way to go, but the test scores went up, in some cases, 10 percentage points, which is really good news.
So I think a lot of that is get back to the basics. Traditional curriculum, so we've tried different methods in the past 10, 20, even back further than that in some cases, different methods which have, you know, they've been shown in our test results, our forward test scores have been declining, and I think that's a direct correlation there, changing our curriculum. So, you know, looking at using the science of reading, for example, getting back to the basics, phonics-based instruction. You know, Common Core was a thing that had, you know, recently come out within the past 10, 15 years, you know, that's shown math scores are also down as well. You know, so again, getting back to the basics. And another item is, I don't think, we can't be afraid to hold a child back in those rare cases where they're not performing at their grade level. While it can certainly be disappointing to the parent, to the child, if they're being held back, you know, you're going to have to create a new set of friends, there's going to be some feelings of disappointment there. There's going to be a further disappointment if that child is with their peers and they're not able to read, not able to, you know, keep up with them in their studies. And then later in life, maybe that individual can't even fill out a job application. So it's, you know, there's a short-term, you know, disappointment there for a long-term gain, I think. And if, you know, in, again, those rare cases, a child isn't performing, they need that extra time to work on their studies in whichever grade level, you know, we want to take that opportunity to address it right away so that it's not an issue down the road. Having a background from the Army, I understand and appreciate the importance of the structure and the values. So knowing what it takes to complete a mission, how to properly get it done. You know, I further recognize how discipline can actually be a positive impact on a young mind. So setting a standard and a goal, and if we're not able to achieve it, you know, we hold everyone accountable for that. So that's where I would see, you know, moving forward as far as addressing any education gap.
The COVID-19 pandemic changed many things in education. Some students thrived with virtual learning while others fell behind. We also are experiencing use of technology like never before. How do we equip our staff to provide the best educational opportunities with the financial resources available? We have also hired extra staff to work with students to help them get back to where they need to be educationally. Our staff continues to work hard every day to help each and every student.
It comes down to this: curriculum, curriculum, curriculum. Although the COVID-19 impacted our educational system, we have issues that have been ongoing for 10 years. Unfortunately, there is no quick fix for this. It took us 10 years to get here, so it's going to take a while to get back. I believe one way to start would be by bringing in, especially in reading, that our kids are falling down terrible in reading. We need to bring in reading specialists and maybe utilize more classroom time for that reading part of it. Again, this goes back to mental health issues facing our student. If kids are unable to read, well, it undermines their confidence in everything they do. So we really need, that's a key area we need to focus on, is our reading and abilities for our children. So. Well, after attending the school board meetings for the last few years and listening quite intently, I became greatly concerned and disheartened, especially after finding out the information from the DPI, just how these young minds are struggling. Our students deserve to excel. At these school board meetings, I did not hear any solutions to the problems. I then realized that, and a friend of mine once told me, if you want to make change, you have to get involved yourself. So with that, I decided to become involved. I've never shied away from hard work or challenges in my life. I set and meet goals. I'm data-driven. I'm not afraid to take on problems and the work to resolve and resolve these issues. I believe I am the voice the community can benefit from to tackle these, just these very issues. As I've done all in my life, I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work with parents, teachers, staff, and community. Again, I'm Mike Geary, and I'm asking for your vote.
I hope the voters of Wisconsin Rapids will select me to serve on the school board for several reasons. First of all, I'm very passionate about public education and why we have public education. It's important for the survival of our republic. It's important for our students so that they can pursue higher academic pursuits, so that they can work in the area they want to work in for their employment throughout their lives, and so that they can be good citizens. Secondly, I believe strongly in the mission of Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. Again, that being providing the best education for every student. This is something I was passionate about for 35 years. Every day when I went to work, I thought about that mission. And after leaving it for three years, I just feel ready and the need to jump back in and do what I can in the capacity as a board member to support the district in achieving that mission. Finally, I do have the knowledge, skills, and experience to do the job. After working for the district for 35 years, having the three degrees that I do have, being familiar with board policy, being familiar with state and federal education legislation, I feel very confident that I can come in as a board member and do a good job, although, of course, I'll still have learning to do. And finally, I want the community to know that while I worked in the district for 35 years, I did have kind of a reputation as a change agent. I always, in doing the best for kids, it does require some change. And there's, I'm very proud of my experience, and I'm very proud of the contributions I made. very proud of my experience, and I'm very proud of the contributions I made. So for example, I was the person who led the charge to bring four-year-old kindergarten into the district. I started the new teacher-mentor program. Our current academic intervention program is a result of my leading a committee of excellent teachers and staff and bringing that into being. So I'm always looking for ways to improve the district. And finally, the last thing I'm going to say is that I encourage you to talk to former teachers that I've worked with in my capacity as administrator, former students I worked with in my capacity as principal and teacher, and I think they will tell you, I'm very student-centered, I'm focused on doing what's best for the faculty so they can do what's best for the kids, and in providing the best education for every student in Wisconsin Rapids.
So I do have, you know, some experience working in our community with our children, many facets, whether it be from working with the Rotary Student Scholarships, volunteering with Encourage Community Foundation and their teen leadership program. I have served on the Council for Instructional Improvement here within the district, and I, you know, further support our community through United Ways yearly campaign, raising funds or money for the United Weekend campaign as well. And I think lastly, but most importantly, if elected, I will be the only member on the board that actually has children in the district. I can certainly understand and appreciate the struggles that parents are going through, and to be the voice for all those parents who currently don't have anyone representing them with children in the district. I see the struggles, I hear the struggles, and, you know, I want to be your voice.
I feel that I bring the necessary skills and experience to the position. I'm open-minded and thorough in my decision-making. I take into account the expertise and experience of others. The position of school board member is nonpartisan for a reason. Politics should never come into play in regards to public school education. Every child deserves the very best educational opportunities that we can provide, regardless of their background. If re-elected, I vow to continue to do my very best to ensure that all students are given the opportunity to learn and grow into productive members of society while still being a good steward of local tax dollars. In closing, I would like to encourage anyone watching this to be sure to vote in the election on Tuesday, April 4th. And once again, I would like to thank Wisconsin Rapids Community Media for hosting this candidate forum.